Good evening and welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you are attending in person and wish to speak on a particular agenda item, please register on the sign up sheets located on the table to my left. You will be called upon to make your comments at the appropriate time. You may also call in during the meeting by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all of the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone, and when recognized, state your name and address before making your comments. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes for their presentation. Each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners will be given five minutes for Q and A. Please keep your comments succinct. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the chair. The time to make all public statements is before motions are made. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if the motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. After the case you are here for ends, please exit the chambers quietly and pursue further discussion in the lobby as the commission continues its meeting. Finally, I ask everyone here and on the Zoom, the commission members, the staff, and the public to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to be muted on the Zoom or asked to leave the council chambers until such time they can regain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Shigeris.
Here.
Vice Chair Cameron.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Capers. Commissioner Chakowski. Commissioner Hunter. Commissioner Juarez Maldonado.
Here.
Commissioner Montez.
Here.
Commissioner McIver.
Here.
Commissioner Nein-Kirkner. Commissioner Piantak.
Here.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Woke.
Here.
A quorum has been established.
Thank you. There are no adjustments to the agenda. We do have a new member.
Yes, two new members to introduce you to, well, two new people to introduce you to. One is a new member of the commission, America Juarez Maldonado. Am I saying that right? She replaces Commissioner Kopack, who has recently resigned for obvious reasons for interview who follow local elections. So we welcome Commissioner Juarez Maldonado.
I just want to say hello, and I'm really excited to be part of this commission. I'm born, raised in Durham, so I really care about the community. I come from an organizing background, so I just appreciate being here and I'm learning, but I really look forward to just being part of this committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. And one more introduction to make is our newest staff member to our team. Going to come up. I'd like to introduce you to Javar Jones. He doesn't have any cases yet that are coming before you, but he will in the near future. Javar is native to North Carolina, so he was born and raised in Winston-Salem. He is a proud graduate of Wake Forest University. Those of us who attended other better ACC schools will try not to hold that too much against him. He graduated with a degree in politics and international affairs and was first hired with our department to work in the customer service team. He's been there for a couple of years, and just last week moved over to our team. We're very happy to have him.
Thank you. All right, item number four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes and consistency statements. Do we have a motion to approve?
Chair, I move to approve the minutes and consistency statements from October 14th, 2025.
Second. It has been moved by Vice Chair Cameron and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to approve the minutes and consistency statements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No nays? The ayes have it. All right, item number five on the agenda, public hearings, zoning map changes, Z250014 Britmore. May we have the staff report, please?
Hello, good evening, Chair Shigeris, Vice Chair Cameron, and Planning Commissioners. I am Peyton Burgess, and I am here tonight to present Z2500014 Britmore. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. The request is for a 26.668 acres of land located at 8118, 8120, 8122, 8200, 8204, and 8210 Farrington Mill Road to be rezoned from residential rural to planned development residential 4.313 to allow for up to 115 townhouses and single-family dwelling units. Again, the existing zoning is residential rural. The site is surrounded by residential rural and planned development residential 2.0 and 2.870. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The property is currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed zoning was determined to be consistent with the designated place type. The applicant has included the following textual commitments, including up to 115 units to be single-family and townhouses, a 10-foot shared-use path along Farrington Mill Road, off-site sidewalk to connect to existing sidewalk on Shorecrest Road, native trees, a maximum of 50% impervious surface, a $10,500 donation to Durham Public Schools, 5% of the final unit count to be income restricted at 80% AMI for 30 years, north and southbound turn lanes, construction traffic to utilize Farrington Mill Road to access the site, 10% of single-family units to have first-floor bedrooms, and at least one street to have a mixture of housing types. The applicant held neighborhood meetings on May 22nd and October 16th, 2025. 20 community members attended the first meeting and 42 attended the second. There are currently 40 comments against this proposal on the Durham rezoning explore. The proposal is generally consistent with the existing place type map designation of mixed residential neighborhood and is consistent with two of two applicable place type policies. Additionally, the proposal is consistent with 22 of 26 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
The chair is now opening the public hearing.
Good evening, Chairwoman Shigeris, Vice Chair Cameron, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Baiker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive here in Durham. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm proud to be here tonight to represent TriPoint Homes, which already has an outstanding track record in Durham. With us tonight are our team leader, Mandy Hoyle, with TriPoint, and also Tim Seivers, the president of Cunydy, our land planning and engineering firm for this mixed residential neighborhood that we are calling Britmore. At the outset, and as noted in your staff report, we are pleased that this rezoning complies with 22 out of 26 applicable comprehensive plan policies. That's a very strong degree of compliance, in my experience. I wish to emphasize our commitment that impervious surface will be limited to no more than 50%, which means that only 13 1/3 acres out of the 26 2/3 acres that you see shaded in red on the slide before you, only 13 1/3 acres will be developed. Accordingly, half of the site acreage will be green space, tree cover, open space, and undisturbed. That's a strong commitment, since the UDO allows up to 70% impervious surface in this section of Durham. In the recently adopted comprehensive plan, a key component and perhaps the dominant theme is, if you summarize the 250 pages, give or take, in our comp plan, that dominant theme is densify inside the urban growth boundary. If you look at the adjacent Montclair neighborhood on this slide, that was approved about 12 years ago, the PDR densities were two units per acre and 2.87 units per acre. In addition, Montclair has one single-family, one single housing type, which is single-family detached. For Britmore, our PDR density is 4.313 units per acre, and we are providing a combination of single-family homes and townhouses to diversify the housing inventory in this section of Durham. Next, I want to highlight the traffic information on page five of your staff report. In regards to traffic, this proposal increases traffic generation from these 27 acres by 55 trips in the AM peak and 74 trips in the PM peak. Our team recognizes that peak hour traffic in this area is a concern, but it seems evident that the overwhelming majority of traffic in this area is due to commuters from the Cary region commuting all the way to UNC Chapel Hill. We heard the residents of Montclair's concern with this issue. Therefore, based on those concerns, we proposed a four-way stop condition in the middle of the Britmore development, but unfortunately, that proposal did not fly with the city's transportation staff. However, to be a good neighbor, we have added a text commitment that all construction-related traffic shall be required to enter Britmore off of Farrington Mill Road, well away from the Montclair neighborhood, which, again, is something you can see in the bottom-left corner of this slide. When Montclair was approved, it was clear at that time that this acreage to the south would be developed at some point in the future. Here on this slide is the stubout of Shorecrest Road in Montclair that is stubbed out to the Britmore assemblage. I would be remiss if I did not also note that there is water and sewer infrastructure capacity here to serve the 27 acres and the 115 housing units that we are discussing tonight. Next, I wish to refer to a recent statewide study done regarding North Carolina's housing shortage. According to Bowen National Research, in a study commissioned by our State Chamber of Commerce, Durham needs 15,293 for-sale homes to meet the demand for that type of housing over the 2024 to 2029 timeframe. I wish to direct your attention to the bottom of this, bottom center of this chart on this slide, the 27-acre assemblage in southwest Durham, which has good access to all those jobs at UNC Chapel Hill and UNC Hospital, which is designated mixed residential neighborhood on the future place type map, and which has a road stubout along with water and sewer infrastructure put in place about a decade ago. That exemplifies an ideal location for addressing that 15,000 for-sale housing shortfall we are looking at right now. In closing, our team also has worked hard to address sustainability. We had hoped to proffer a text commitment to give all single-family homeowners the opportunity to install solar panels on their new home, but unfortunately, that was deemed unenforceable. Nevertheless, TriPoint will be making that offer to install solar panels to all single-family homeowners. If we are given credit for that, that would bolster the green infrastructure policy compliance for the Britmore neighborhood. Moreover, Britmore contains both townhouses and single-family homes unlike most of the rezonings over the past 20 years. Britmore also contributes affordable housing to help address Durham's housing supply problem that I referred to a moment ago. We also are providing for 10% of the single-family homes to have a first-floor bedroom, so there will be age and mobility inclusion in Britmore as well. In closing, this is a strong proposal that hits the mark on 22 out of 26 applicable comprehensive plan policies. For all these reasons, we respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval. Our team will be happy to answer any questions. We appreciate your time tonight, and I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other sign up sheet, community members in person. Chuck Darcy?
Yes.
Yes? You want to do that first? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Julie McClintock, and my address is on file. We oppose the rezoning for Britmore's request because we all lack sufficient knowledge of the project to determine whether the zoning change is warranted. The textual development plan chosen by the applicant does not address the concerns of neighbors who live off Farrington Road and travel these roads regularly. This vague plan fails to explain how a rural property with limited infrastructure and transit will function. Meanwhile, the applicant can avoid the thorough review by staff in the community that a complete plan would have required. The development is a mixed residential project, we know that, with unspecified types of homes and townhomes. We don't know where the streams and buffers are located, which will influence their placement. What is the actual traffic impact? We find ourselves in the difficult position of buying a pig in a poke. That is, purchasing something we can't see or visualize. What happens if the staff discovers it's impossible to fit 115 townhomes on what amounts to 13 usable acres? It will be too late because the city won't be able to revert the property back to rural residential without the owner's approval. This rezoning should be denied because the area around Montclair remains rural and lacks sufficient road capacity to accommodate additional cars or transit. The Corps of Engineers will continue to restrict transit improvements because its main mission is to protect the Jordan Lake watershed and our drinking water supply that we all drink. One certainty is that the final site plan will not look like the cartoonish graphic before you. The final key point is, if there's a strong chance these plans won't work out, why would the Planning Commission approve a zoning change for this property? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm closing out the... Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your volunteering to serve Durham. My name is Annette Rice, and my address is on file. This project proposes rezoning the site here at PDR 4.312, going from rural residential, where there are only two buildings located on the entire plot, to a much greater density. During their neighborhood meetings, the development team claimed their build would emulate that of Montclair. Although this sounds fabulous, based upon the density, it's impossible. Montclair has 72 homes on 31 acres, and the average density of its two phases is 2.4. Britmore proposes 115 homes and townhomes on 26.67, or almost twice the density of Montclair. Their commitment to 50% impervious surface leaves just 3 1/3 acres for their 115 units, or basically twice their proposed density when it's all said and done. And that would be almost four times that of Montclair. It implies more tightly-packed townhomes than single-family homes, and there's no committed maximum or a minimum for those two housing types. The proposed townhome areas would be directly across the road from Blue Sun Farms' new hay barn, and now that is rural residential. Britmore fronts Farrington Mill, and at that point in Farrington Mill, Jordan Lake-protected watershed lands and critical watershed areas meet. Yet the current place type for the site is mixed residential. You all know that place types are guidelines from the comprehensive plan, which we all know is non-binding, much like your decision tonight will be considered advisory-only. Although your decision tonight is also non-binding, it sends a message to the city council on just how you'd like to see these outer, more rural areas of the UGB develop. This sort of density makes much more sense in the nearby transit-opportunity area or closer out of this sensitive area where development is already booming, conveniently much closer to the Celeste Circle sewer lift station that could serve Britmore, although their sewer would be pushed through three other lift stations in order to actually reach the main one. We don't mean Britmore, we need Britless. Thank you.
And thank you, Kathy Rexrode.
Greetings, Commissioners. Thank you for serving our community in this way. My name is Catherine Rexrode. My address is on file. I'm a registered nurse, and I spent 10 years of my career doing home visits, and I'd like to speak briefly about affordable and accessible housing. The Britmore textual development plan commits to 5% of the final unit count being affordable for those making 80% of the AMI for 30 years. That's fairly weak compared to the comprehensive development plan, which specifies or requests 15% for this number of acres at a 50% to 80% of the area median income. And ideally, that affordability would be in perpetuity. It wouldn't expire by the time our grandkids are looking for housing. Also, .16 of the Britmore development plan says 10% of single-family homes will be accessible. That with this density, it's unclear how many single-family homes will actually be built, and a first-floor bedroom is the only committed accessibility feature. There's two problems with this, well, there's multiple problems with this, but here's two. Given the density, are we going to have 10 homes with one that's accessible? It checks a box for the developer, but is essentially proportionately meaningless. Secondly, a first-floor bedroom is only accessible if you have a bathroom that is attached, that is a full bath. If the person on the first-floor bedroom has to use a half-bath that everybody else on the first floor is using, that is not really accessible. It needs to be committed for that bedroom, and that bedroom needs to also ideally have access to a kitchen and entry-level street grading. So I would encourage you as the Planning Commission to just think about asking for a certain number of affordable units, ask the developer to combine affordable and accessible units, because that is a huge need, and ask for the private baths. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Barry Saunders from 8110 Kennebec Drive. The Britmore parcel, lower left in red, sits in a protective zone for Jordan Lake. It adjoins the critical zone where dense development can't happen. Drainage into Jordan is mostly via Little Creek to the east, a tiny bit via Morgan Creek to the west. Both creeks are impaired now. The lake arms they flow into are eutrophic. Generally, development pressure on Durham Creeks is draining into North Jordan Lake is intensifying. The Durham soils map shows several intermittent streams on the parcel. The second map, Britmore parcel in red, just highlights these streams already shown on the soils map. All new developments create new impervious surfaces, leaking vehicles, and landscaping fertilizers. All contribute nutrient and toxin pollution to lake water that serves our drinking, habitat, and recreation uses. Here are eutrophic conditions that presently occur throughout the shallow northern arms of the lake. Although Britmore developers propose to limit impervious surfaces to 50% and catch drainage in a pond, 13 acres of new cement and shingle here is too much. Intermittent streams will require 100-foot riparian buffers. Look how buffers restrict what land can be graded and built. One of these streams is already within 100 feet of the Montclair stubroad at that Britmore northern boundary. Hard to imagine how that road connection can fail to further violate the buffer. In view of the stream map, which the developers have not shared in the convenient sparseness of a textual application, their schematic of the development is a misleading fantasy. Streams will limit what the developers can build. There's bound to be an increased proportion of townhomes, or what we think is more reasonable, a reduction in dwelling units planned. Fewer units, less roof and pavement would limit impacts down slope. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Hine is next on the list, but we'll wait until we do all the Zooms at once. John Cowan?
John Cowan.
Cowan.
Hi, I'm John Cowan, the owner of Blue Sun Farm, the 112-acre farm directly across Farrington Mill Road from the proposed Britmore project. My addresses include 8301 and 8303 Farrington Mill Road, directly across from the proposed outlets for hundreds of cars per day. There are two ponds on opposite sides of Farrington Mill, right there, and on my side it's a home to hooded mergansers, buffalo heads, kingfishers, osprey, and we are looking for bald eagle nests next to the pond. Current plans for Western Water Project Pipeline, which I support, are to cross over Farrington Mill between the two ponds and use the right-of-way for pipeline exactly where the developers say they want to use the right-of-way for inadequate turn lanes on a blind corner. Building hundreds of units directly north of the new water treatment plant is contradictory. I've committed myself to run my horse, sheep, hay, and honey farm and ensure our vital and growing rural community continues forward forever. This is not an unused area that, we are an active and vital community, that this proposal would change forever. The area must be restricted to rural farming and single-family homes. The vague textual proposal here addresses none of the very strong reasons not to develop and would be typical for a simple fill-in area of an urban area. This proposal is going from 0 to 1,000, destroying our natural resources forever. The property already has two very nice homes, currently occupied. I've committed my land to the voluntary agriculture district for 10 years, joining at least two other VAD properties nearby, like the Cedarwood Stables on Stagecoach. I have 17 people who work for the farm and several living there. We raise honeybees, hay, we produce sheep, a source of meat, to undeserved, underserved ethnic communities in North Carolina. We have a large equestrian resource center and are employing North Carolina State Ag Program grads and students, supporting and teaching the people who will grow your food tomorrow. I'm getting public funding from Durham County Soil and Water State Funding for conservation and improved community water, but right across the road, the development impact to Jordan Lake would be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Costagliola? Costagliola.
Can I hit down? Want to make it larger?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Linda Costagliola, and my home address is on file. My presentation will cite facts from the Triangle West Vision Zero Plan. The city's action plan doesn't address the rural roads Britmore will impact. The intersections that would be affected by Britmore are all classified as high, as regional high-risk intersections for fatal or injury crashes. Ratings are low, medium, high. These rural roads are Farrington Mill Road and Barbie Chapel Road, Farrington Road and Stagecoach Road, Kepley Road and Farrington Mill Road, Farrington Mill Road and Mill Chapel Road. Those are the red circles. Britmore will add 1,147 daily trips to highly dangerous rural roads and intersections. A development at the density of Britmore on these rural roads is quite literally an accident waiting to happen. Barbie Chapel Road, Farrington Road, and Stagecoach Road are shown to be in the top 5% in our transportation region for the likelihood of speed-related crashes, lane departure, and motorcycle accidents. The area is in the top 15% for likely highest-risk pedestrian and bicycle crashes in Durham County. Farrington Mill Road is one of the top five speed risk locations in Durham County. The proposed development has two entry areas, one being on Farrington Mill Road and Kepley Road, that is the circle. Many of the suggested mitigation strategies cannot be implemented since the Army Corps of Engineers owns most of the properties of these intersections and is not prone to giving permission to expand or make changes. A disconnected walk-bike skate path will be only along the frontage of the development on Farrington Mill Road. That path would end pretty much directly across the street from Kepley Road, making pedestrians, skaters, and bikers suddenly without designated safe pathways right where the Downs community ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Holt Farley? Holt Farley.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Holt Farley. I live on Keppley Road, which is directly across from the proposed Britmore development. I'd like to address the Britmore transportation analysis. I can't cover all the serious problems in two minutes, so I've sent each of you a written detailed review. Let me summarize the key points. The transportation analysis relied on outdated 2023 traffic data, misrepresented road capacity, and completely ignores expected future growth on Farrington Mill Road between now and Britmore's anticipated completion in 2028. Using current NC DOT data, Farrington Mill Road traffic has increased at a 7% annual growth rate over the past two years. Continuing this trend shows ambient growth alone will exceed the road's maximum capacity, pushing it to a failing Level of Service F grade by 2028. This projection does not include the traffic from Britmore itself, 14 other nearby under-construction housing developments, or commuter traffic from Orange County and Chatham County. Farrington Mill Road is already one of the five most dangerous roads in Durham County. All its traffic directly funnels into three key intersections at Barbie Chapel, Farrington Road, Stagecoach Road, and Route 751, intersections that cannot be widened to handle more volume due to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers flood control restrictions. Durham's practice of reviewing traffic impacts one project at a time without considering cumulative effects or realistic growth is creating severe congestion and safety risks. Rezoning will only worsen an already overburdened and unsafe transportation network. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to vote no to the Britmore rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Galloway.
My name is Tom Galloway. My address is on file. This map shows a three-mile radius around Britmore. Our major transportation conduits are on the periphery, 501, 54, I-40, and 751. Our local road network is in the center. I've shown the locations of Britmore and Morgan Farm because they are .7 miles apart and both are on Farrington Mill. Of note, the first iteration of Morgan Farm was voted down by the city council in April of this year. They concluded that our local road infrastructure could not absorb incremental traffic from a dense housing development. Let's take a closer look inside the radius. This map shows an environmental overlay in the locations of 16 developments with over 7,000 units that have been advanced since October of '22. You have that list in front of you. Our local roads, detailed in black, are two-lane country roads that were carved through Army Corps-protected lands decades ago. They cannot be widened and no new roads can be built. NC DOT has been unable to get Army Corps approval to improve our local roads and intersections since 2015. As you can see, this is a unique area unlike any other in Durham County. All of the transportation conduits are already congested. During morning and evening peak hours, traffic is bumper-to-bumper and traffic is steady all day. Commuters are increasingly using our local roads as a bypass to avoid congestion on the primary conduits. Farrington Mill is the primary road used by commuters to get to and from Durham, Chatham, and Orange Counties. NC DOT data indicates that traffic on Farrington Mill increased 12.9% from August 24 to August 25. 11,800 cars travel that road every day. Even without Britmore, Farrington Mill will deteriorate to LOSF by 2028. Please vote no.
Thank you. Larry Tiedem.
Cool. Never mind. Thank you. Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is Larry Tiedem. My address is on file. I'm talking tonight briefly about Little Creek Bridge, which sits along Farrington Mill Road. It was built in 1979 and I have -- I'm sorry. We have pictures here expanding since 2009, and the purpose of the pictures is to show the deterioration of the bridge. In 2016, they installed guardrails. The bridge, over the course of time, has started to slowly cant to the north and the roadways have deteriorated. The blue arrows indicate where the road is falling off into Army Corps of Engineer area. And as you can see here, the bridge was upgraded, repaired in 2017 with rickwrap to support it as it's deteriorating. The blue arrows again indicate how the, in 2024, the roadway is deteriorating and now the bridge is separating from the land where it meets. That's it. This is a major traffic conduit. The large construction vehicles will continue to damage this. The bridge was originally scheduled for replacement in 2025. This has been pushed back to 2030. Any repairs or changes in the infrastructure by Britmore will require the city to absorb the cost to move the bridge, as well as the infrastructure, sewer lines, water lines. The replacement of this bridge in 2022 was $4 million point eight. It'll be more. Please vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Williamson.
High school. I have left my house 30 minutes before game time for 3.1 miles, estimated 11 minutes. I missed the first quarter the first time I went Stagecoach Road. The next time I used 54, left 30 minutes before the game was to start, 3.1 miles. I got there in the middle of the first quarter. I now drive all the way up Farrington Road to Chapel Hill Road and come down Garrett Road because of traffic situations. My concern after moving here is we do not have the infrastructure to handle a lot more cars. There is just nowhere for them to go. There is just nowhere for them to go. I have also had problems exiting off of I-40 from the west and had to go all the way down to Falcon Bridge and come back in to get to Farrington Road simply because of traffic problems at that major intersection coming off of 40. It is impossible, and you are going to have a major mess if this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Darcy.
Chuck Darcy, 111 Larry Lane. Eddie's right. It's a mess out there. I moved out there 46 years ago, lived there 46 years. It was a country road. It's never changed. The road is the same road that was there 46 years ago. And the only ingress and egress, other than going through Montclair, will be Farrington Mill Road or Barbie Chapel Road for this. The preferred route for people coming from Chapel Hill to get on I-40 is to stay away from 54 because of that horrible intersection up there. And they cut through Barbie Chapel, they come through, it turns into Farrington, then Stagecoach, they get on 751 to get on. That's the way they go. Everything that comes up from Chatham County can only go 751, 15501, or Farrington Mill Road. If you've been on 15501 at quitting time, it's a parking lot. And that's what Farrington Road has become, Farrington Mill Road. I spoke here when the last Sheffield Farms was up. I counted one time, out of curiosity, I made the mistake of going out at rush hour. I'm retired now, so I don't have to go out. But I made the mistake of going out and I counted the number of cars that went by Keppley before I could turn out. It was 39 cars came out, and this is exactly what's happening all the time. And I would be happy, and I know you all are volunteers and are not paid for your position, but I would be happy to pick any of you up and ride you out there at rush hour and see what we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Moore, BB.
I know. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Moore and my address is on record. And I sent each of you an email inviting you to come down and look at this area because you can't understand this. Just looking at these maps for three seconds, I urge you to keep the zoning as residential rural. It's just the wrong place at the wrong time. The land along Farrington Mill Road is unique for wildlife and water supplies and farming, and this is a significant north-to-south wildlife area in Durham County. And a corridor means continuous tree cover and access to water. They need the same things we do. In a two-mile area, all the housing is single-family homes. Three-story apartment buildings do not belong here. The nearest public transportation is an hour walk. This is not connectivity. There are no closed services like food, drugstore, and gas or banks. The developer would clear-cut almost half of the property, which is a mixed hardwood forest. And the proposed sidewalks along Farrington Mill Road is dangerous because the traffic is going 40 to 60 miles per hour. And the sidewalks, they dead-end to nowhere. Farrington Mill Road is a narrow rural -- oh dear. Farrington Mill Road will also carry pipes necessary for the Durham County water supply called the Western Intake Partnership Pipe, which Durham is invested in. And the one thing you don't know is Durham County is adding more than 30,000 units with Chatham Park, 22,000 homes, and Disney's Astoria Campus with 4,000 homes. That's more than the 15,000 needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Young.
Good evening. My name is Dana Young and I live in the Downs community directly across from the proposed Britmore site. Our neighborhood has only one way in and out, Keppley onto Farrington Mill, right where Britmore, construction, and future traffic would enter and exit. The photo gives a view of both sides of Farrington Mill from Keppley. You can see this is a narrow, deteriorating two-lane road. We chose this area to live in because it is rural and residential and it's surrounded by conservation and farmland. The character of the southernmost tip of Durham County is low-density, single-family homes, and we want to keep it that way. Traffic is already a major issue, as you've heard. I commute to South Point Mall and have to use Farrington Mill, Farrington Road, and Stagecoach to get to 751. It's the only direct route. Backups on Stagecoach often extend 3/4 of a mile or more to get through that light. And unlike other areas, there's no way to expand road capacity here. Conservation lands, protected waterways, and Army Corps restrictions make widening or adding new routes virtually impossible. If Britmore is approved, construction will disrupt Farrington Mill and surrounding roads from 2026 to 2028. The tentative Morgan Farm project that's been applied for down the road would extend these impacts to 2031, and if approved, these high-density developments would further increase traffic congestion and safety risks. Adding to that, Durham has two major projects scheduled in this area along the same roads. The Lower Little Creek Bridge replacement is scheduled 2029 to 2032, and Western Intake Water Line is scheduled 2030 to 2035 to supply drinking water to Durham. Together, that's nearly a decade of gridlock on a car-dependent road system with no alternate routes or public transit. Durham has not conducted a comprehensive study that considers all developments and overlapping construction schedules that are approved and will significantly impact us. Our local infrastructure is inadequate, unsafe, and at capacity already. We are asking that no new developments be approved until infrastructure issues are fully addressed and that zoning remain residential rural to preserve the character and safety of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now going to call it community members on Zoom. Please remember to state your name and your address. Jennifer Maher.
Yes, am I ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Maher. My address is on file. I'm a Durham resident. I'm also co-chair of New Hope Bird Alliance's Conservation Committee, and I signed up tonight to speak to the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Review revisions. But in listening to this, I have to jump in and point out how this very project shows how the consistency review does not work correctly. The petitioner says that it meets 24 of 28 of policies in its consistency review. Well, seven of those are for the same sidewalk. Two of them are redundant, the use of native plants. Two more are redundant residential type. Meanwhile, the not-applicable score on three refers to the city not yet having adopted Durham County's Eno-New Hope Landscape Conservation Plan, which identifies this property as part of the wildlife corridor and the area that would connect the two river drainage systems in Durham, Eno and New Hope. Space that is part of the plan that envisions green space running through our city and county. That's what I have to say about this, and thank you, but note that the raw score that you see on a consistency review often does not reflect the values that the community wants from the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom? Please use the raise-your-hand function if you're on a phone. Star nine. Kate Heim.
Yes, I would -- I had a slide to be presented while I'm talking on Zoom. I don't know if that was made possible. If so, could that be placed while I talk? Okay. Good evening. Okay, perfect. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kate Heim and my address is on record. Many aspects of the Britmore application do not meet policies for or the objective of the environment goal for harmonious and respectful development, page 67 of the Durham Comprehensive Plan, which says, quote, "We need to build in harmony with the environment in a way that respects, protects, and regenerates the environment for the benefit of all living things. We need to design new development to protect our remaining natural areas, including wetlands, floodplains, lakes, rivers, streams, mature forests, and the native plants and animals that rely on them to live. We need to stop development practices that contribute to loss of biodiversity and to manage the landscape in ways that promote a healthy environment. We need to protect the plants, animals, and insects that are native to Durham and essential for all life and restore them when possible. We need green infrastructure to protect residents and the environment from the effects of pollution and flooding. Whenever possible, we need to make use of the resources we already have, like existing buildings and infrastructure, so that we do not have to always create new things from scratch," unquote. The Durham County Open Space Program Project Connectivity Report, which is not the one-sided in the application, designates almost in the application, designates almost half of the Britmore property as high-priority habitat and provides a connection to another high-priority area. This is ignored in the application for Policy 81, locate open space in new development so that it protects the most environmentally sensitive portions of the site and creates large and contiguous habitat areas rather than narrow and disconnected strips of space. Specifically, to exceed the UDO standards and meet this policy, a commitment must be made regarding the location of open space to ensure areas are connected and protect the most sensitive areas on-site. The application says that the, there are no identified sensitive natural areas on the site. This is not true. There are most environmentally sensitive portions of the site on there, including the high-priority habitat and the more than 2.5-acre pond, and no commitment exists to protect or connect these. Instead, the pond, which water and animals use as home, water source and food source and place for transit like water turtles, is planned to be destroyed and have townhomes placed there, at least on the initial plan. Please consider these inconsistencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom? Please raise your hand. Going once. Anybody going twice? Okay, seeing no one else on the Zoom that wishes to speak. Would the applicant care to address any of these concerns?
Good evening again. Chair Shigeru, Vice Chair Kierman, members of the Planning Commission, again Patrick Baker for the applicant tri-point. All the facts that were recited about traffic and our comprehensive plan and environmental features, these were all facts that were in existence back when the, back when the planning department was doing its community outreach for our comprehensive plan in 2020, 2021, 2022, it was adopted in 2023. After tremendous community engagement, this 26 acres we're looking at tonight were designated mixed residential neighborhood, and that's exactly what this proposal puts forward. I have to take issue with the characterization of 4.313 units as high-density. I don't think that's appropriate. And I also want to emphasize all the traffic concerns. Again, certainly empathize with them, but I want to recognize that we have outstanding staff. I have the utmost respect for Erling Thomas and John Sandor. And all of these infrastructure issues were well flushed out when the comprehensive plan was, when those public hearings were held and then when it was adopted. I do want to emphasize another proffer that our team would like to make based on the wildlife corridor issue that was raised. We think that's very important. And our team would like to proffer a 50-foot wildlife corridor along the western boundary of Britmore. That would be inclusive of the project boundary buffer, obviously the stubout that has to be to the west pursuant to UDO requirements, and it will be inclusive of our tree coverage as well. But we'll be happy to wordsmith that with Peyton tomorrow. But we do want to address that wildlife corridor issue. It certainly is a valid concern, and we think 50 feet, given that the other property to the west is undeveloped, will be adequate to address that concern. Again, lastly, I do want to also, again, the scoring that the planning department does with comprehensive plan policies, I think that's very rigorous. I'm very impressed with how it's done. I've been doing, appearing before this commission for 25 or 30 years now. I think this is the most rigorous reviews that rezoning proposals have received in my career. And so I also take issue with any assertions that the staff review is somehow deficient in regards to traffic or comprehensive plan policies. With that, we respectfully ask for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. We are open for Commissioner discussion. Is there any Commissioner comments? Discussion questions? Commissioner Ritchie.
I just wanted to follow up. I'm sorry, I did not get your name. You're an RN that focuses on ADA. And I just wanted to ask if, I don't think that we've seen a proffer in the past where we combined affordable and accessible housing, but I think it's an interesting idea for this. I was curious what that would look like for the developer to make their proffer a commitment to that 5% affordable overlapping with the 10% that is required to have a first-story, first-story bedroom.
We'll be happy to research that issue. That's something we have to research. We can't answer that on the fly, but we'll certainly evaluate that carefully going forward.
Okay, we'll put that in the comments to the council. Staff.
If I could, just real quick, Erin Kane with the planning department. So the applicant could commit that the affordable units are going to be accessible. What we could, I think we might have trouble with is enforcing whether or not it was somebody who needed those accessibility, those accessibilities in those units, especially if it's for sale, that we would run into some privacy issues trying to enforce that. So just want to make that clear.
Go ahead, Mr. Ritchie.
Sorry, one more as well. The, one of the commitments, I know this is going to sound silly, but one of the commitments was in the element commitments, you guys have dog parks, and we've talked about this in the past, dog parks are kind of used as an easy way to get out of more substantive commitments when it comes to open space. Could we just remove that as one of the commitments? Or would you all be open to removing that as one of the commitments?
We're happy to remove the dog park language from that specific text commitment and be happy to work on that with Peyton later this week. But we agree with that, that position. Thank you.
Commissioner Hunter.
One of the community members mentioned having, along the same lines as Commissioner Ritchie, having accessibility in terms of a full bathroom on the first floor. Is that something that the applicant could commit to where there are first-floor bedrooms, there would also be a full bathroom?
Yes, Commissioner Hunter, we can commit to the proffer being expanded so that it would be a first-floor bedroom with a first-floor full bathroom. I hope I captured your sentiment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions, comments? I have a question. Is there any chance of upping the percentage?
I'm sorry.
Of the AMIs? The affordability, the percentage of the affordability units?
No, ma'am. No, Madam Chair. The 5% at 80% AMI for sale with a 30%, I'm sorry, 30-year duration is the best we can do, and that meets the UDO definition for affordability on for-sale, for-sale housing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Commissioner Montez?
Yeah, I have one thing, but it's very straightforward. There's one parcel, I believe this sidewalk or the concern the public made was there was a lack of potential gap in sidewalk between the development to the east, and then there may be one parcel in between the proposed development and the existing sidewalk that is there. Has there been any effort to reach out to that property owner and see if perhaps we could just connect it? And I know it's not a lot along that frontage, maybe a couple hundred feet of connectivity that could be done, but I would just suggest a try, I mean, to make that connection with the sidewalk. I think, you know, having that gap there between sidewalk would be kind of awkward, but perhaps Fee and Lou would do it. I'm not sure, but at least an effort to be made.
Appreciate that concern, Commissioner Montez. I actually went to UNC Chapel Hill with Rashid Wallace, who happens to own that property, and so I'll be happy to give him a call. We'll be happy to reach out to the property owner and see if that would be feasible. I'm not optimistic, but we'll certainly make the effort. And I saw him play in the Dean Dome.
Anyone else? Nope, we're good. Okay, may I have, yes, may I have a motion to move case Z250014 Britmore forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation?
Chair Shigeru, I recommend a motion, or make a motion to recommend case Z2500014 to Council with a favorable motion. Recommendation. We're getting there.
It has been moved by Commissioner Ritchie and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to move this case forward with a favorable recommendation. May we have the electronic voting, please?
Vote, the Gazzan. Vote fails six to three.
Thank you. The next case, Z24034 Creekside Mixed Use. May we have the staff report, please?
Awesome, thank you. I'm going to present Creekside Mixed Use, case Z24034. Oh, wait, for the slides for a second. Cool, thank you. This case is 12 parcels of land totaling 75.50 acres. It's currently within the city limits. The applicant proposes to change the zoning of these parcels from residential suburban 20 and residential suburban multifamily with a development plan to planned development residential 8.346 in order to allow up to 630 townhouses, apartments, and two-family dwellings with up to 9,500 square feet of non-residential uses. As stated previously, the existing zoning is residential suburban 20 and residential suburban multifamily with a development plan. The proposed zoning PDR residential or planned development residential 8.346, this is surrounded by a mix of zoning districts that include RS 20, industrial light, commercial center, and commercial general. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The site is situated west of South Miami Boulevard and east of Anger Avenue. The property is currently designated mixed-use neighborhood in the place type map. The proposal is generally consistent with the place type, as allows a range of residential and non-residential uses. On the screen are a list of notable commitments. Along with the confirmed allowed residential uses, it also prohibits convenience stores and with gasoline sales and drive-through facilities. There are minimum requirements for apartments for 220 apartment units and 200 townhouse units. 3% of the townhouse or duplexes are to be income restricted. 8% of the apartment units are affordable per UDO. There's a 60,000-square-foot publicly accessible open space amenity provided. It also proposes construction of a bus pullout, subject to approval by Go Durham and Go Raleigh. All required plantings are native species, and the apartments will meet the Energy Star certification requirements. On screen is the proposed development plan. One access point is shown along Miami Boulevard. Another access point is indicated along Anger Avenue. Cortez Drive will be utilized as another access point from Anger Avenue into the development. From Cortez Drive, there are four additional access points into the development. One stream crossing is identified, which is the existing right-of-way of Cortez Drive. Tree preservation areas are located throughout the site, specifically on the northern portion and the southeast portion of the site. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the neighborhood meeting guidelines on October 2nd, 2024, and September 10th, 2025. One commitment, or one comment against the proposal has been received by staff in relation to this case on the Durham rezoning explorer. As stated earlier, their proposal is generally consistent with the place type map designation of mixed-use neighborhood due to the mixture of residential and non-residential uses, and the proposal is consistent with 22 of 24 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Thank you, staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. The chair is now opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant, please?
Good evening. Evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Laura Holloman, and I'm with McAdams, representing the land planning of this project. Our address is 2905 Meridian Parkway here in Durham. Joining me tonight are Kate Murdock, also with McAdams, Steve George of the CEC Group, developer and property owner, and Rinald Stevenson, traffic engineer with DRMP. Thank you to staff for a wonderful presentation and comprehensive review of our project. I just want to take the time to highlight some aspects of this project that we believe make it so strong. Again, just for overall background, it is just under 53 acres and is located along Anger Avenue here and then South Miami, US 70 here. The proposed density is 8.346, which allows up to 630 townhomes, apartments, and duplexes, and up to 9,500, 9,500 square feet of non-residential use. This is right in line with the place type map, which designates this property as mixed-use neighborhood, which again, staff reiterated several times that that was generally consistent. It also eliminates the use of convenience store with gasoline sales and drive-through uses after neighborhood feedback and wanting to attract local-type businesses. It also stipulates a minimum of 220 apartment units and a minimum of 200 townhouse units. 15% of those townhouse units shall be surface parked with no garage, and the minimum of 20% of townhome units shall be 1,700 square feet or less. These commitments, the intent behind these is to diversify our unit types on-site. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the developer shall convey to the city of Durham an open space area of at least 60,000 square feet and with a frontage on Anger Avenue of no less than 100 linear feet. If the city does not accept the dedication, the area will still be meant for public use and will instead be publicly accessible open space. So either it'll be deeded to the city or a public access easement will be recorded prior to the first CO. So either way, in this area here, folks get an opportunity to have a pocket park area for public, for public use and enjoyment. This just highlights, I think, a little bit better the proposed development plan, so you can see the protected environmental areas throughout the site. The, again, I pointed out the public park. This is the proposed commercial area, because again, you want to have the commercial area along US 70, and it's also adjacent to the current commercial area here along 70, although it is separated by a pretty significant stream feature there. There's only one stream crossing, as staff mentioned, that is already where it has to go with that existing Cortez Drive right-of-way there that's already deeded and in existence. I think this is pretty significant, and there's not a lot of cases I see that are this intense that doesn't really have a significant stream crossing on-site, but we wanted to protect and really have a continuous corridor throughout the site there. So there's many sustainable commitments through this case that I'll go through and additionally subject to determination by Go Durham and Go Raleigh. The developer should construct a bus pullout with a shelter along Anger Avenue. And there's also construction of a 10-foot shared-use path along Anger Avenue as well. All apartments will meet Energy Star Multifamily New Construction Program requirements, which is significant, and all street trees, vehicular use area trees, trees within perimeter buffers and screenings, all must be native plantings. In terms of the affordable housing commitment, this was highlighted by staff, but just again, it specifies that a minimum of 8% of apartments shall be affordable as defined in the UDO. For those of you that may not know, that means a 60% of AMI for a period of 30 years. That's the, that's the UDO requirement. And we're also specifying townhomes and duplexes, 3% of, 8% AMI for 30 years. And the project is unique in that way because it focuses on both rentals and owner-occupied for affordable. A lot of folks A lot of folks, when they provide a mixture of housing types, they just stick all the affordable units within the apartments, but we spread it out to make, to focus on homeownership as well. All told, this proposed rezoning is right in line with what the city is envisioning here. Also want to point out that this dividing line, I know it can be hard to see with the print over it, that specifies where the higher building height can go. So everything on this side of this line, the maximum height is 40 feet. So we're being conscious of our neighbors here, and everything on this side closer to US 70, South Miami, that can go higher than 40 feet. So logic tells you that the apartments will go in this area, and the townhomes and duplexes will go in this area. Just want to be clear on that, that's meant to provide appropriate neighborhood transitions. So all told, the proposed rezoning is right in line with what the city is envisioning here, to have a cohesive project with access to both Anger and 70, multiple lane uses, and to provide the missing puzzle pieces crucial to this area. You know, this, for those of you that have been on this board a long time, you've seen a combination of these before. There's currently an approved P D R with a development plan for this area for up to 350 apartments, and this area has been tried a couple of times for both single-family and a mixture of townhomes, but nothing that allows for townhomes and duplexes. The problem with that is, when this was approved, there was no interior, internal vehicular connection between, nothing specifying that this would be connected. So by having this developed cohesively, you're ensuring appropriate vehicular connectivity for the entire project, and I think lends itself to a much better design overall. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Galloway? Anyone else in person, anybody in person and care to speak? Dana Young? Steve George?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Steve George. I'm with the C S C Group, who owns the property here. So I am available to answer any questions at any time.
Okay, thank you. Is there no Tom Galloway or Dana Young present? Okay. All right, on the Zoom, we have Paul Joffreyan wishing to speak.
Good evening, members of the panel. Thank you. I, point of order about the second neighborhood meeting. It came with a notification letter that included an internet address of 76 characters. That's 76. To the credit of the representative for the developer, I was able to reach them on the day of the neighborhood meeting and get an email link emailed to me, but I think there were many people who may have been put off with that. I invite each of you to Google a traffic near me map at commuting hours, commuting hours in the morning and commuting hours in the afternoon, and you will see three red lines. One is the East End Connector, the other is Highway 70, and the other is 885 or 147. Zoom in closer, and you will see backup traffic on Anger from Glover in the direction towards Pleasant and on Anger from South Miami back towards Tyonet. It is a hopeful fantasy, I say this with respect, it is a hopeful fantasy to think that an egress from the project to South Miami and any number of egresses from the project to Anger will allow people to get in and out with any kind of non-miserable timeliness. There are so many things to speak to, time is limited. I just want to say that Durham is focused on growth, but one needs to ask the question to what end? If growth does not enhance quality of life but hinders it instead, then growth for the sake of growth really has no point. My time is running out. Thank you for your time, vote no on this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom wishing to speak on the Creekside Mixed Use project? Please raise your hand or star nine if you're on the phone. Andrew Hefner?
Hi, I have a request. My domestic partner would also like to use this connection to voice her opinions. Is that permissible?
Yes.
My name is Andrew Hefner, Pleasant Drive, and I would like to speak to just one aspect of this proposed development and zoning change, and that is traffic safety and accessibility. Just a quick background, one of my careers was 10 years spent overseeing truck logistics, route planning, safety issues, traffic accident mitigation, and I've looked at this ingress-egress plan from the developers, and it won't work. I've studied this, you know, for a decade, and there's a couple of things that are problematic in the extreme. Number one, the two entrances they have on Anger Avenue are so close together that they might as well be one, because any traffic issues on Anger is going to affect both of those equally. So if you can't get out of one, you won't be able to get out of the other. The other is the history of 70, which is almost perennially one of the most dangerous road sections in the county. High traffic, I mean, high accident rates, and if you've ever been down that lane during the peak hours, morning or evening, it's a rolling parking lot. So one issue with that is anybody coming out of the apartment entrance onto 70, going north, it's not possible. They're not going to be able to make it. There's no way they can get through that traffic and go north. On the other side, on Anger, during those same peak periods, anybody who is trying to get out of the development and head south on Anger, they won't be able to make it without putting themselves at risk pulling out in front of traffic.
Andrew, Andrew, your time is up. You have, if your partner would like to speak, they will also have two minutes. They can state their name and address also. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Noelle Paul. I live at 709 Pleasant Drive, and my response to this development is mainly an emotional response that everywhere I've been driving in Durham, I'm seeing clear lots. The trees are getting chopped down all over the city, and it's not something that would make me want to come live in a town if I kept seeing all the trees being chopped down. And it's an environmental disaster, as far as I'm concerned. And as I used to tell my preschool students, if you keep killing all the trees, then we're all going to die because they create the oxygen that we breathe. It's an eyesore everywhere I go in Durham. They're clear-cutting trees. We're not going to have any left at the rate things are going, so please vote no for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom wishing to speak on the Creekside Mixed Use project? Please raise your hand. Nope. Would the applicant like to address any of the concerns, specifically the traffic ingress and egress on 70 and Anger?
Yes, we would definitely like to take a look at that. We have Rynal Stevenson here from D R M P. He is the traffic engineer for the site, and I think he can address all the issues that were brought up.
Good afternoon, good evening. Rynal Stevenson with D R M P. Just want to address the, I will address the traffic questions or issues that were brought up. There was a traffic study done for this project. It's been reviewed by city staff and D O T, N C D O T. There are a number of road improvements, transportation improvements that will be done with this project to address some of the traffic issues. But I do want to, I do want to point out the key, kind of the key point that Laura made is by having a connection, connectivity between 70 Miami and Anger, that gives people who live here options to go either way. So you heard some of the questions or some of the issues or concerns about being able to turn left onto 70 Miami? Yes, that's going to be very, very difficult to do during peak rush hour times. However, the good news is because of the connectivity, that traffic can now make a right turn on Anger and go to Pleasant, where we're making improvements at Anger and Pleasant and then Pleasant and 70. We're making improvements there to help those intersections work better, so that would be a better route for those folks to take. That is very difficult to do for those people if there's not interconnectivity. So the fact that we connect from 70 Miami to Anger is a huge benefit for folks within this development to be able to travel to either roadway to get out and particularly turn right out of either access point, which is a much easier movement to make, depending on whether you're going north or you're going south. And a lot of the roads, you know, Anger obviously connects back into 70 Miami. Pleasant is a connection you can kind of see on the screen here that connects over. So we're really developing a sort of a grid pattern here with these multiple connection points that connect these roadways, and that gives drivers and residents here in this community options to be able to take the path that is better for them. And so with, like I said, there's a number of road improvements that are required at these intersections to improve the intersections, to help move traffic better than what the community is experiencing today.
Thank you. Okay, the chair is now closing the public hearing, and we are open for Commissioner comments and discussion. Commissioner Hunter?
Yes, I have a question. So you mentioned that you're going to make some road improvements to Pleasant in order for that connectivity to exist. Can you talk us through what those will look like?
Sure. I think I have this graphic here. Is this being shown on the screen? There we go. So I have a kind of picture of this, but one of the main issues here is being able to turn left onto 70 Miami. Currently, there's only one left turn lane here in this area today, so we're essentially going to double the capacity of that movement by adding another left turn lane. So again, that provides much-needed capacity to be able to come down Pleasant and make a left turn onto 70 Miami. Provides a big improvement for that intersection.
Got it. So my assumption is that people would come into, into the neighborhood, leave out, make a left onto Anger, and make another left onto Pleasant, and then come down and make a left onto 70. Is that correct?
They could, let me go back to the plan just really fast to make sure. Let me go back to this one. Okay. So what I wanted to point out is that if you're traveling, if you're traveling south, and those were good points raised about there being congestion on Anger and Miami or 70, very good points, during rush hours, it's going to be very difficult to make left turns there out of either roadway. But as I was saying, if you want to travel south and the traffic is congested, one way to do it would be to come out to 70 Miami here and make a right turn, which is a much easier move to make than a left, so make a right turn and travel south as opposed to having to, being forced to go out to, out Cortez to Anger, or drive to Anger and make a left turn there to travel south. So when you make right turns, the right turns are much easier to make and a much safer movement to make than forcing people to turn left. So I would say traveling south during congested times, making a right turn onto 70 Miami would be the easier movement to make. Coming into the site, there is a left turn lane on 70 Miami to be able to turn left in. Left turns from the main roads are usually easier to make than turning left out of the side road. If you can imagine, you're already on, you're on the major roads, you can turn left in here into this access easier than you can turning left out onto 70. And so, but the point that I was making too is that if you want to travel north, you could come out to Anger, again, make a right-hand turn that is easier to make, go up to Pleasant, where there's improvements there that we have to make for a right turn movement here to help the right turn be made easier, as well as a potential traffic signal if it's warranted. We go in there, and you could come over to Pleasant and 70 here to the improvement we just talked about to help and make the left turn movement there at a signalized condition.
Okay. Yeah, so I understood that. I use this road pretty frequently. My concern here is that the, is the quality of life for the folks that live on Pleasant Drive, because that's going to increase their traffic. They are already a through street, and it's going to increase their traffic. It's a very tight road. I believe it's a two-lane road, and there's not really any shoulders or sidewalk or anything like that. And so, and there are residential homes along that entire road. So there are some concerns there, just in terms of the increase in traffic and the condition of the roads as well. I mean, I understand improving the entrance and the exit of that street, but just along the entire corridor, it's going to get a lot of use, as it already does. In addition, I do have some concerns about, you know, things that the community members have already stated in that Anger is a heavily-used road. It also has the train station, and the train is the most inconvenient thing in the world. Like it decides it wants to pull out and start shuffling, I don't even know what it's doing, shuffling the cars, you know, at 8 o'clock, 8:30 in the morning. So there are, I do have some concerns there, but thank you.
Can I just say one thing too about, you've mentioned Pleasant being a kind of a, I can't even call it a cut-through or kind of a through street, but one of the things that the development has to actually sort of plan for is the fact that we now have a cut-through street as well. So that can also be a relief for some of the other traffic through here as well. So not all the through-street or cut-through traffic has to go on Pleasant now. You know, there's another connection between 70, or Miami 70, and Anger. So in some ways, that could be a relief for Pleasant when this is connected, you know, connected all the way through. So that's just one other thing that I think is, didn't want to really overlook. That can be a relief for Pleasant as well if we, you know, if this is approved and built, there's a connection, another connection that connects those two roadways.
Certainly. I think it also begs the question if it causes stress for the people who will live in your community, in that community, because that will increase their traffic as well.
Yeah, that's, we're going to have to take that into account, you know, as we move forward with it, for sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Woke?
Hi, Carrie Woke. So in one of your neighborhood meetings, one of the neighbors mentioned that this is one of the last contiguous wooded areas in this part of Durham, and if you look at the Google Maps, you can see that that is correct. And so my question is, there is no tree coverage beyond what's required by the U D O? And, you know, in kind of in the spirit of that, this is one of these last wooded areas in this part of Durham, would you consider tree coverage beyond what is required by the U D O? in this part of Durham, would you consider tree coverage beyond what is required by the UDO?
Hi, I'll answer that question. And great question, Commissioner. So I think, as I mentioned before, you know, this has been, this has been a, you know, a project that, that the boards have seen in many forms. This is, when this came through, the, the tree coverage was, was I think only 20%, not the 30% that it stands today. So that's currently approved on, on this side. And then when this originally came through, the, the tree preservation was, was 20% as well. So of course, we're, we're meeting the today requirement of 30%. But I just want to say, you know, it, this is, the CEC group has, has owned this land. They've owned it the whole time through that failed rezoning and have come back before you through this. They've gone ahead and bought this parcel as well to develop, but they were committed to making this cohesive and to provide a better vehicular connection. So I say all that to say, you know, sometimes it benefits the whole to wait for something great. And I think the benefit of, while you may see it as, as meeting only minimum standards, and we see it as definitely an improvement and really the, probably the best, the best this project could be. But as I mentioned, you know, with, with no string crossings, we're also, you know, committing to keeping, you know, what we, what's currently in a protected environmental area. We're not, we're not going to be having additional environmental impacts to those. So, so really, you know, I think we're doing the best we can with meeting the 30% tree coverage.
Any other Commissioner Ritchie?
Just a quick one. I couldn't tell from the staff report. Is all construction Energy Star or just the apartments?
Just the apartments.
Okay. Would you all consider townhouses? What's the challenge for townhouses being Energy Star?
We would evaluate that is what he's trying to say.
Yeah, let me, yeah, we don't want to be fuzzy about this, but yeah, we would definitely look into that. And if that's something, I don't know all the details on the, on like a townhome, what that would affect. But absolutely, we would try to be consistent across the site if we can. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions, comments? Commissioner Montez?
Yeah, the park space in Area B that's to be dedicated to City of Durham. I think that's fabulous. More of that is needed. Just question is, what, you know, what conversations, if City of Durham were to not accept that, because I know there's a process behind that, the real estate division would have to get involved. It's not an easy process and, you know, Durham would take up maintenance of that. Has there been any thought to the developer, the community becoming, you know, if Durham were not to accept it, that the city or the developer could keep maintenance of that open space or what else could be planned in that area? I mean, it could be park space, which is great, perhaps, you know. Woke, it could be more tree save in that area that could, could refer to that. But if it's not tree save, what kind of rec open space are we, you know, planning to do there for the community?
He's saying what sort of open space elements are we talking about?
Yeah, we're, we're fully, if the city does not take it as a park, yeah, we are going to keep it. It's going to be publicly accessible and it will be in a park-like setting. And yeah, we, we would be happy to put, I heard some discussion about dog park or something like that, you know, something like that or a kid's PlayStation, you know, that type thing or something like that. Absolutely, yeah. We want to make it useful for both the residents and the public, and that's why it's accessible off of Angier also. So yes, it's meant to be that type of space.
And then lastly is the, the traffic improvements would be for, on the, between Angier and Area B where you're dedicating that open space, that's all going to be improved to City of Durham standards? You know, I've read the improvements like five times and I still, it's a little tricky how you say it, but, you know, I'm assuming that Angier Avenue is going to be improved as well as Cortez going into, from Angier all the way through the frontage of the main central site, right?
Yeah, I know there's turn lanes that are required on, on Angier, you know, at the access points and then.
Yeah, we're improving Cortez right now.
I know per the UDO, you have to improve your frontage of your site. That's UDO standard. But I'm considering if, if Area B is potentially dedicated to Durham and that's no longer part of your site, is, is that area on Angier, that entire frontage going to be improved at least from the center line to your frontage, right? Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I have one question. It may, it's concerning traffic and it may be for Earlene Thomas. The entrance on 70, is that going to be signalized? You said you've been working with NC DOT. Is there a chance?
The entrance on 70 is not likely to be signalized, not be signalized.
Could it be? That would help the people on other thoroughfare. It would help reduce their impact and it would also help the turning problem on Angier.
Well, I, I would say as much as it probably would be helpful to us, you know, in our development, I don't, I think the likelihood of a signal there is probably almost zero with DOT approving that. And really because, and Earlene, if she says something different, but, but I think the likelihood of that being signalized is almost zero. And one of the reasons is that if you signalize that, we're stopping traffic again on 70 Miami. So I don't, I think there's pretty much no chance that that'll happen there and unless, you know, Earlene feels something different, but I don't, I don't think that would happen.
Earlene?
Earlene Thomas, Planning and Development, Transportation Review Section. So you're asking about the access points on US 70 for the development? No, they will not be signalized.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so no more questions? Everybody's done? All right. May I have a motion to move case Z 24 00034 Creekside Mixed Use forward?
Chair, in the case of Z 24 00034 Creekside Mixed Use, I move that we move this case forward to City Council with a favorable recommendation. How can I forget this stuff that quick?
Do I have a second? It has been moved by Vice Chair Cameron and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to move case Z 24 00034 Creekside Mixed Use forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council. May we have the electronic vote, please?
The motion passes five to four.
Thank you. We can get done with the next, yeah. Okay, case Z 24 00045 Andrews Chapel Apartments. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Shigeras, Vice Chair Cameron and Planning Commissioners. I'm Peyton Burgess and I am here tonight to present Z 24 00045 Andrews Chapel Apartments. The request is for a 1.836 acre parcel of land located at 1029 Andrews Chapel Road to go from Residential Suburban 10 to Plan Development Residential 32.680 to allow for up to 60 apartment units. Again, the existing zoning is Residential Suburban 10. The site is surrounded by more Residential Suburban 10, Commercial, Commercial General with a development plan and PDR 12 and 15. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The property is currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the placetype map. The proposed zoning was determined to be consistent with the designated placetype. The applicant has included the following commitments: a maximum of 60 apartments, a maximum of 80% impervious surface, native plantings, a 10-foot-wide concrete shared path along the site frontage, site access via Andrews Chapel Road to be right-in, right-out only, and multi-story buildings to contain at least one elevator. The applicant held neighborhood meetings on March 6th and September 29th, 2025. There were seven community members in attendance at both meetings. There have been no comments regarding this case on the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is consistent with the existing placetype map designation of mixed residential neighborhood and is consistent with two of two applicable placetype policies. Additionally, the proposal is consistent with 14 of 17 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. The chair is now opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant?
Good evening, Chair Shigeras, Vice Chair Cameron, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Patrick Byker, 112614 Stewart Drive, and I'm attorney with Morningstar Law Group. I'm here tonight representing SVGE Investments LLC, which is made up of a wonderful young married couple, Jasmine and Imad Lubad. This is their first project. And I have to say, it is great to see young, local talent jumping into the deep end to take on this type of real estate development. Jasmine and Imad have put together a great local team with civil consultants as their engineers and Mr. Andrew Jones, our site engineer is here tonight. And they also have selected Gateway Building Company as their contractor. Both of these are outstanding Durham-based companies. This section of City of Durham is actually in Wake County, and I personally worked on the initial annexation of the City of Durham into Wake County about 10 or 12 years ago. We kicked off the development in this area with the Harris Teeter Anchored Shopping Center at Glenwood Avenue and TW Alexander Drive. As you can see from this slide, the parcel we are considering tonight is kind of an infill site since it's located very close to other multifamily developments. In our recently adopted comprehensive plan, a key component is creating the 15-minute community. To that end, I wanted to zoom out and show how this 1.8 acres relates to the other developments in the vicinity. That Harris Teeter I worked on about 10 years ago is less than a third of a mile to the south, as you can see on this slide. Along with a great grocery store, there are restaurants, other retail, a Wake Med facility, and a bus stop for Go Durham Route 2, all within about a 15-minute walk from this site. As Durham needs new housing supply, it is important to look at the existing zoning for Jasmine and Imad's property. As you can see on this slide, it is RS 10. The easy thing for my clients to do would have been to just subdivide the 1.8 acres into about seven single-family lots and use the byright zoning and not have to go through any public hearings. I would be remiss if I did not point out that Imad already has, already has a very successful career as the owner and operator of the International Delights Restaurant on 9th Street near Duke East Campus. Hope you all have been there. Imad's father started International Delights about 30 years ago. And so Imad is the second-generation owner of this outstanding restaurant. I also want to highlight that Imad went to Riverside High School, and that again reinforces how this is a Durham homegrown initiative. Since this section of Southeast Durham has been entitled primarily for age-restricted, single-family housing, it is in keeping with the future placetype map to move forward with multifamily housing on this 1.8 acres. And to its credit, our team has put forward a development plan that is in compliance with, with 14 out of 17 applicable comprehensive plan policies. That is a strong achievement. In closing, I reckon you all are tired of listening to me tonight, so now it is my privilege to turn over the microphone to Jasmine Lubad. Jasmine will share more of our team's background and her vision for creating new housing that is targeted at serving our nation's veterans, since that type of housing is in very high demand, especially in central North Carolina. After you hear from Jasmine, our team will be happy to answer any questions. We respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Jasmine Lubad and my address is on file. My husband Imad and I are incredibly grateful to be here. Reaching this point represents nearly two years of hard work, collaboration, and determination to bring our vision to life. Together, we bring unique strengths, different lived experiences, but share one purpose: building communities that thrive. We see ourselves not just as developers, but as local partners invested in Durham's long-term success. Imad is a proud Durham native whose family has served the city for 33 years through International Delights Restaurant on 9th Street, a place that has always reflected the spirit of community and belonging. My own journey began in the United States Marine Corps, where I learned the values of service, accountability, and perseverance. These same principles now shape my work in real estate, housing advocacy, and development. Our goal for Andrews Chapel Apartments is to create housing that goes beyond brick and mortar, a place that fosters stability, opportunity, and connection. This is our home. Our work is deeply rooted in Durham. It's where we live, where we will raise our family, and continue to invest our time and energy. Our hope is that our development continues to, contributes to the city's continued growth while honoring the people in the neighborhoods that make Durham a special place that it is. Thank you for your time, your consideration, in allowing the local families like ours to, the opportunity to contribute to Durham's continued growth and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. There is nobody else on the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak on this? Please raise your hand. Heidi McFall? Please state your name and address.
Heidi McFall. My address is 1012 Kaia Court, Durham, North Carolina. Good evening, everyone. As a resident of the neighboring townhouse community, I'm delighted to have this opportunity to share my thoughts with you all about this development. I've had the pleasure one evening while out on, out on a dog walk, talking with Jasmine and Imad about their vision for their property. It's truly refreshing to see individuals who are not only committed to improving our community, but also have a clear and ambitious plan for the future. As a fellow veteran, I want to emphasize how important it is to support local developers, especially those who have served our country. Veterans bring a unique perspective and strong dedication to their work, and Jasmine and Imad are great examples of that. Raising children in this community gives me hope, especially when I see young couples like Jasmine and Imad stepping up as role models. Their ambition and vision can inspire not only their peers, but also the next generation. It's this type of leadership that will shape our community for the better. So I say, let's compute, continue to support our local initiatives and foster the spirit, the spirit of collaboration that makes our neighborhood a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom wishing to speak on the Andrews Chapel Apartments apartment? Nope, I don't see any hands. Okay, the chair is now closing the public hearing and we are open for Commissioner discussion. Any questions or comments on this project? Commissioner Woke?
Carrie Woke. So this, I'm, I'm curious that, so you are targeting like veterans for this community, but there are no affordable units. Is that something that you would consider offering?
Commissioner Woke, this is such a small project in terms of 60 units at the most. And so what our team is focused on is providing wraparound services onsite for veterans. So while there's not an affordable housing commitment, we are committed to providing those services. And there will be other, certainly other programs that Jasmine can describe in more detail, certainly more than I can, that will be serving the veterans that we are targeting to live in these apartments. So we do not have an affordable housing commitment.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Just to follow up on that, it is just because of a lack of textual commitment to that. I'm curious if there's anything that you all can put in text, sorry, losing my voice, that will indicate that that's going to be a commitment moving forward. voice, that will indicate that that's going to be the commitment moving forward, although we absolutely believe you.
That's a great question or a great insight. We would like to proffer a commitment for there will be a 1,000-square-foot office within the site. That will be, of course, will be a leasing office, but we want to proffer that it will also provide veterans-targeted services. And again, Jasmine's forgotten more about it than I'll ever know, but we would like to make that proffer, that there will be 1,000-square-foot office space that will include services targeted for our nation's veterans.
Aaron Kane with the Planning Department. Yeah, let's talk about that. I'm a little concerned about that specific of a commitment to the use of the office space. So we appreciate the proffer. We will work with the applicant to come up with something that meets the intent of what they're looking to do. I just want to make sure the commission's aware that we may have to word it differently once you see it go to city council. We'll be happy to do that.
Real quick, was there not an already?
Commissioner Montez?
You got trouble.
State your name.
Juan Montez. Sorry. Was there not, I mean, this being an apartment complex, there already is going to be a leasing office?
Correct.
Right, so we're not changing necessarily, I mean, I understand the proffer, but there is already the intent that that leasing office is going to be informative, it's going to be educational for veterans to be able to, you know, lease an apartment or other services, but I'm not sure what other textual commitments would be even necessary. Is the concern just the actual use of the office is the concern?
I think it's, yeah, that specific of a use, if for some reason in the future, the ownership changes or something along those lines, then if it's not for veterans' services specifically, then it could be a zoning violation that would need to be addressed. So I just want to kind of have a chance to confer internally. So we're not opposed to the idea. We just want to make sure that it's written in a way that doesn't cause problems in the future, if that might be the case.
Great point. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Nope, we're good. Commissioner Piantac?
Thank you. Corey Piantac. I just want to say thank you for your commitment to veterans. I think that's admirable, and your creativity in also thinking about how we can focus on affordable housing for this population that served our country. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move case Z2500?
Chair, regarding the case of Z240045 Andrews Chapel Apartments, I move that we forward this case to city council with a favorable recommendation for approval.
It has been moved by Vice Chair Cameron and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to move this case forward with a favorable recommendation. May we have the electronic vote, please?
The motion passes nine to zero. Commissioner, Chair Shigeris, looking at the time of 7:25, I suggest now would be a good time to take a recess for our closed captioner and come back when you deem appropriate.
Yes, we'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you.
I came to the city to develop leadership and supervisory skills. I stayed because of the city's culture and dedication to serving residents. The City of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the whole city, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
We, the people.
Nosotros, de gente.
Women, renmin.
Mi adumavio.
Hum, sablog.
We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men.
And women.
Are created equal.
And shall be afforded.
The inalienable right.
To fair housing.
The City of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
Owning a home provides a sense of financial stability, family, community, and pride, but housing prices are now higher than ever, making it hard for many Durham residents to afford their first home. That's why the City of Durham is offering the Down Payment Assistance Program to support eligible individuals with up to $80,000 in 0% interest-forgivable loans to purchase a house within the city limits. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program.
All right. Item number six on the agenda, public hearings, initial zoning map changes, Z two five triple zero one six A dash BDG two five triple zero one zero Trenton Road Assemblage. May we have the staff report, please?
All right. Good evening, Chair Shigeris, Vice Chair Cameron and Planning Commissioners. I am Peyton Burgess and I am here tonight to present Z twenty five zero 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 sixteen A Trenton Road Assemblage. The request is for a direct translation rezoning for sixteen point nine nine acres of land located. Sorry, I've been fighting losing my voice too and it's going out on me. Um, of land zone residential suburban twenty and located at forty five oh three, forty five oh nine, forty five seventeen, forty six oh seven and forty six eleven Trenton Road. The existing zoning would allow for up to thirty three homes. The existing zoning is residential suburban twenty. The site is surrounded by the same. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. To the west of the site is Lee Farm Park. The property is currently designated established residential on the place type map. The proposed zoning was determined to be consistent with the designated place type. The applicant held neighborhood meetings on June twelfth and August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. There were eight community members in attendance at the first meeting and four at the second. There have been no comments received under our rezoning explorer in relation to this case. The proposal is consistent with the existing place type map designation of established residential. The proposal is also consistent with five of five applicable comprehensive plan policies. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. The chair is now opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates, Landscape Architecture and Land Planning from here in Durham. And here with me tonight is Gary Wallace, who is a home builder with B Wallace Design and Construction. Thank you Peyton for the overview. Um, just to quickly recap, the property exists consists of five existing parcels located along Trenton Roads, approximately seventeen acres total. And it includes three existing homes. Adopted place type map for this location is established residential. All five lots are currently zoned RS twenty and will remain RS twenty if this annexation is approved. No rezoning is proposed as part of our request. If approved, the annexation would allow for these lots to connect water and sewer and also be um available to accept other city um services. The proposed development is fully consistent with the current zoning district. The plan is to create an additional six single family lots going from five parcels to eleven. And there would be ultimately eight additional homes. And the staff report notes up to thirty three units could be constructed if this annexation is approved. This is correct under the normal RS twenty development rules. The existing lots are deed restricted and will require a minimum of one point two acres per lot or per for up for per lot for dwelling to be constructed. This means that with the deed restriction in place, the total number of units could be up to fourteen, but the current plan is for eleven. So less than half of what we could do by right with the RS twenty zoning. And note, the city does not regulate deed restrictions, but this is important to mention as the total number of dwellings would be that will be permitted here is much less than the normal RS twenty development rules. And B Wallace Design and Construction, and again Gary is here, if you have questions for him, is a woman owned design build firm that will be building the houses here. And thank you for your consideration. I'm here for any questions and Gary is also available.
Thank you. Uh, there's no community members in person signed up. And is there anybody on the Zoom? Please raise your hand if you're wanting to speak. John Creech.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, John Creech. Uh, address is four four one two Trenton Road. Uh, I just got the review of a recording of the presentation of um the community meeting that was held and um just wanted to say I'd um. I support their uh commitment to adhere to the restrictive covenants and um. Also, they uh they also uh developers said they would like to uh retain trees on the lot and instead of, you know. I fully support their effort on that as well. My only concerns that I wanted to bring here today and um, I don't know if anybody could help me out with it, but uh. Was uh increased traffic where this this uh part of Trenton Road is speed limit is twenty five. It's quite curvy in some areas. I now have two kids here, so I was just concerned about, you know, increased traffic. Don't know if it's speed bump installed in anywhere because we have delivery trucks coming in and out. We're a single entry, single exit road here on Trenton. And um, the only other concern I wanted to bring up was. In Trenton onto um Farrington. If you've ever made tried to make that turn there, cars are coming really fast down Farrington. There's a lot of overgrowth of vegetation over there near the overpass of I forty. So you can't really see what's coming around that curve. So I just wanted to raise those concerns, but other than that, um, I support their uh. What they're doing with the the development and I think they have the best uh intentions for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom wishing to speak on Trenton Road Assemblage, Jennifer Hernandez? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hernandez. I'm at forty three sixteen Taylor Hall Place. Um, similar to John, I um I had questions around um traffic going into Trenton Road in terms of um. You know, the that ability to make turns um with kind of a curve um and people um, you know. Not necessarily want to slow down behind you if you're trying to make a right hand turn. Um, there's no, there's no lane to really do it in. There's a little bit of a shoulder, but it it can be a little daunting and sometimes people swerve around you. Um, I think the other questions I had and I unfortunately wasn't able to make the the two meetings earlier in the summer. But was around um sidewalk, um, any, any, any comments around the sidewalk? To help with pedestrian flow. I think there's a lot of people that walk on the shoulder of the road at this point. And so I didn't know if there would be any sidewalks related to this development. Um, and then just anything related to environmental impacts. It sounds like some tree preservation and and, you know, um. Lower density than what could be allowed on the space. So um, I I'm not saying that there's a concern. I'm just sort of curious if that had been looked at at all or was being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom wishing to speak on the Trenton Road Assemblage? Please raise your hand. Nope. Okay, going once, going twice, done. Can we have uh any replies to the concerns?
Yes, yeah, I wanted to reply to those. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. So um, there were three things I heard, uh, traffic, sidewalk and tree preservation. So I'm gonna work backwards and start with tree preservation. Um, this is an annexation request, not a rezoning, so we are not allowed to add conditions like we would for a zoning. So we are not committing to anything because we don't have the mechanism to do so. However, because of the number of the lots and the size of the lots, there will be trees left. It doesn't behoove anybody to cut down all the trees on all the lots. That is not a good way to develop. Um, so the plan is to keep trees. We just don't have a tree coverage minimum to be meeting. So I wanted to address that first and foremost. Um, again, same thing with sidewalk. If that's something that we would commit to during a zoning. When site plan is submitted, we will have to comply to any and all of the rules of the U D O, whether the current or the new one that gets adopted, depending on the timing of when this gets submitted. And if sidewalk ends up being a requirement of this, then we will have to do that. But again, we can't commit to that because we're not doing a rezoning. And then regarding traffic, so there is a neighborhood to the south of this. Somebody mentioned the one way in and out and that is correct. Trenton Road serves, I think, sixty to seventy units to the south of our where our proposed development is going to be. And the people that are going to be use living in the houses that are going to be developed as part of this request. They don't have a reason to go into that neighborhood because there's no way out. They'd just be going down and kind of doing a U turn and coming back up. So the traffic here is not really going to impact the folks in that neighborhood because there really, again, there's no reason for anybody to drive down there. That said, this will add traffic, but there the number of lots is so low. Eleven lots does not generate really much traffic at all. It's not enough to trigger any sort of T I A or traffic impact statement or anything. I think Eileen, who might still be here, could, she's not here, okay. Um, but if she were here, uh, she would probably, you know, concur with that. It's just not an amount of traffic that is should be really concerning, I don't think. It's it's a low dense, very low density, I would say at this point. So although traffic is being added, it's going to be such a low amount, I don't think it's going to be super noticeable compared to some of the bigger developments that are getting approved right now. And I believe that was it for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The public hearing is now closed. We're open for Commissioner discussion, comments, questions, anybody? Nope, we're good. Okay, may I have a motion to move case Z twenty five triple zero one six A BDG two five zero 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 one zero Trenton Road Assemblage forward?
Chair, regarding um the initial zoning map, uh, case Z twenty five triple zero sixteen A dash BDG twenty five triple zero ten Trenton Road Assemblage. I move that we move this case forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation for approval.
It has been moved by Vice Chair Cameron and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to move this case forward with a favorable recommendation. May we have the electronic voting, please?
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Now on to item seven, public hearing, comprehensive plan amendment A two five, quadruple zero two evaluation and assessment report. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Shigeris, Aaron Kane with the Planning Department. Just a friendly reminder that you saw this last week as well. Uh, you asked us to bring this back to you this mo- I'm sorry, last month, not last week, last month. Um, and just a reminder of what the E A R is. It stands for environ- I'm sorry, evaluation and assessment report. It is mandated by both the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance to do every two years to assess progress on the comprehensive plan. And one of the things we are doing through this process is providing some technical updates to the place type map. You saw that last month and you made votes on that last month. You asked us to bring you the policies that we are making recommendations on this month. Uh, you did, the specific policy that was discussed was policy seventy nine. Uh, hopefully you have seen in your attachment that there are some changes to that policy to do our best to address your concerns. Go ahead and do the next, thank you. So one thing we're talking about is the review of the D policies and the commentary. And um, just a reminder that a removal of the D designation does not mean removal from the comprehensive plan itself. We are not recommending that any policy be removed from the comprehensive plan, but rather looking at which policy should be part of that comprehensive plan policy review document that you get as part of your package for all zoning and annexation cases. So I want to go through specifically some policies uh that are changing. First, we have had some input from uh members of our community regarding policy seventy nine. We made some changes, but we've made some additional changes based on what's in your packet and they're shown here on the screen now. So we were asked to uh talk about habitats and corridors. So we did make that change. So we're proposing that uh we talk about habitats and corridors here. Uh, we are incorporating language from policies eighty one and eighty three, and that is that last sentence. Um, and we have, based on a request from members of the community, removed the term uh term when possible that was originally in your packet. So that just says now such areas should be protected in their natural state in large and contiguous areas. So that's the first change. The next one is policy eighty two. We had some comments from the community about uh adding the word and to wildlife habitat and corridor. Staff has no concerns about that, and so we are proposing that change as well. We also got some comments from Durham Open Space and Trails regarding some policies. Um, they requested that policy one oh four remain as a D policy and part of our uh review process. And we have no, staff has no concerns about that. We have no objection, so we are suggesting that that also be included. We did get a request from DOST to keep policies eighty one and eighty three rather than seventy nine. Um, staff is sticking with its original recommendation to keep seventy nine, especially with that additional sentence added about large and contiguous areas and natural state. We feel that addresses eighty one and eighty three. And one thing we've heard from many members in the community is a concern about duplication in our policies and that proposals get quote unquote high scores because they do one thing and, you know, repetitive policies give them, oh yeah, you've met four policies by doing native plants. So we're trying to address that concern, um, not have duplications in policies that are a part of your comp plan review. So our recommendation is to stick with seventy nine. So based on that, this chart that is in your staff report is a little bit different now. Um, and you can see at the top row that we have add designation or add to policy review to make that a little more clear. But just making sure it's public knowledge that those numbers have changed slightly based on what I just presented to you. And we'll be asking for your, any recommendation you make to include uh the three changes in policies that were presented before you tonight. And with that. We're requesting that you uh provide input, any further input that you may have and make a recommendation.
Thank you. The chair is now opening the public hearing. I guess there's no applicant, so we're gonna have uh the people who are signed up, community members in person. Pam Andrews, Donna Stainback, Pam Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My rec- my name is Pam Andrews. My address has been here a thousand times, I think. At any rate, um, greetings, everybody. Preserval Durham reviewed the E A R report for long, for four hours, one day we spent on it. Um, on the comprehensive plan recently. These proposed revisions are major. They're really not minor. They carry significant environmental impacts and deserve public review. The seventy plus page document was released with little time for analysis or input from the public. Advisory bodies such as the Environmental Affairs Board and Open Space Commissions did not know about this either when I reached out to them. Um, and though their input should be really essential to this. Several revisions weaken existing protections, um, like seventy nine, we're still concerned about drinking water sources. Wildlife habitat, that was a big deal to us, and corridor, that is policy seventy nine, eighty one, eighty two, eighty four, and one oh one. Policy one ninety eight, which is a new policy, limits land conservation, it appears. Um, the E A B designated policies eighty six, eighty seven, ninety two, and ninety three. They lose their environmental status of a D on those policies. A few planning commission members have expressed concern when I talked with you all, some of you I've, you know, talked with over the week. After meeting with Erin and Peyton last Thursday, we appreciate that Erin and Peyton. They have agreed to pull um items from the City Council and County Commissioners' November vote until we could kind of iron some things out, and we do appreciate that, Erin. With major implications and inadequate review time, P R D respectfully request this item be presented to the public for comments before it returns to the leaders for a county for a vote. This should also go to public and advisory boards for their input as well, as well as you all, um, and to adequately review the documents in its entirety. Um, Brooke Massive with the Wildlife Commission said this, I'm gonna be quick. First thoughts, it definitely is true that the wildlife quarters are not wildlife habitats. They are pathways on which wildlife travel to reach habitat areas. And by removing wildlife habitats, they restrict natural areas to to natural heritage, natural areas and lowland habitat areas like floodplains, riparian buffers. So at any rate, she suggests, please don't remove eighty one is what she suggested. And I thank you and Erin, we didn't see these before we spoke tonight, so I'm sorry if we contradicted anything that you did. Um, we do appreciate your willingness to meet with us sincerely. We spent an hour and a half with Erin last Thursday, so thank you, and Peyton, and Peyton. There it is. I'm sorry, got it pulled up. Got it. Just slow. I'm just slow tonight. This is just an update of what Pam was talking about as far as the analysis with there being a hundred ninety eight total policies and commentary. Sixty nine of them uh were uh subject to change and. Sixty-nine of them were subject to change, and there was more than just wording changes. Twenty-eight of them we have looked at, PRD has had a chance to review, because our first priority was environmental and rural-related changes. We reviewed fourteen of those twenty-eight with the Planning Department on the sixth, and there's forty-one additional policies that can be reviewed, but we do not look to have as much input on, you know, across the board on those as we did those that were environmental and rural. And again, we'd like to ask that this not be voted on tonight and give the community, the citizens, a chance to do more analysis, because I think it really paid off, and I was glad to see what Erin presented. Thank you very much.
My name is Pam Williams. My address is on file. I'm here tonight also to thank Erin and Peyton for meeting with us last week to go over some of these. We are really requesting additional time to sit down with Erin and Peyton before this is voted on. Unfortunately, we missed this in the JCCPC meeting in August when it came up the first time. We was not aware of it until the Planning Commission meeting in October fourteenth, and we just found out about it like a couple of days before. We wasn't familiar with the terminology, EAR. If, we think if it had had Comprehensive Plan in front of it, we would have jumped on it sooner or saw it at the JCCPC meeting. Anyway, again, we really do appreciate it, and we really would like to sit down, have some time to sit down with Erin and Peyton to go over the additional ones that we have concerns about, because if you've written contracts, comprehensive plans, policies, you know that just changing one word can make a big difference. And we want to also understand some of the words and meanings and commentaries that they are adding and changing. So we appreciate all your time and efforts here, because we know you don't give up a lot of time to be here. Thank you very much. And thank you, Erin and Peyton.
My name is Steve Cohn. I live at fourteen oh six Pennsylvania Avenue in Durham, and I'm the Chair of the Open Space Committee of the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission. As the citizen group that advises Durham's governments on all matters connected to open space, including matters related to development, we have strongly recommended changes to the Planning Department's Evaluation and Assessment Report in two areas. One of those two areas has already been resolved by Mr. Kane's agreement to keep the D designation for Policy one oh four. The second area involves the cluster of Policies seventy-nine, eighty-one, and eighty-three. We agree that there is duplication, but we strongly believe that planning should remove the D designation from Policy seventy-nine rather than from Policies eighty-one and eighty-three. Policy seventy-nine is a nice statement, but even with the proposed changes, it includes nothing concrete and specific about what a new development should do to accomplish the desired protection. And as the commentary points out, most of what it covers is already addressed in the UDO, although the changes have helped there. Policy eighty-one, on the other hand, is clear about how a new development should place its open space to protect environmentally sensitive portions of the property and create habitat areas. And Policy eighty-three is clear in a different way, unleaving existing habitat areas and wildlife movement corridors undisturbed. Both of these policies are concrete, they cover matters not already addressed in the UDO, and they are essential to meeting the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, we strongly suggest that the D designations need to remain on Policies eighty-one and eighty-three, but the D can without harm be removed from Policy seventy-nine. We believe, whether seventy-nine is kept or not, that eighty-one and eighty-three should remain as key components of the way planning reviews new developments when it presents them for potential approval.
Anybody else in person? Julie McClintock? Or Barry Saunders? In person? Nope, we're going to turn to the Zoom meeting. Tina Motley Pearson, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tina Molly Pearson, and my address is on file. Good evening, planning commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to address several policies in the current Comprehensive Plan update, specifically Policies seventy-nine, eighty-one, and one hundred and one, and a few important omissions that need correction before final adoption. First, Policy one oh one. This policy rightly emphasizes tree coverage beyond what's required by development regulations. However, we need to make sure new developments actually strive for consistent, mature tree canopy across the site, not just isolated clusters. And we should explicitly retain the goal already approved on October twenty twenty-three to achieve fifty-five percent tree canopy by twenty forty. Policy one oh one also needs a D designation. Now turning to Policy seventy-nine, the version originally included protection for drinking water sources. That reference has since been removed, and that's a serious concern. This is the only policy in the plan that covers drinking water protection, and without it, we leave a major gap in environmental safeguards. So I'm asking that Policy seventy-nine be restored to include drinking water protection and have D designation. It should also continue to reference both wildlife habitat and corridors as those elements are interconnected with our watershed health. Regarding Policy eighty-one, this one should remain separate from Policy seventy-nine. Based on feedback from North Carolina Wildlife, the Environmental Advisory Board, and other stakeholders, Policy eighty-one serves a different purpose. It should also be kept as D designation. Policy eighty-five needs to stay as is. I honestly don't feel like this is ready for a vote tonight and needs more in-depth analysis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sarah Bickley?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Sarah Bickley. I live at twelve Streamview Court, Durham, two seven seven one three. I'm the President of the Durham Wildlife Stewards, and I appreciate all the work of the Planning Commission, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am just, I'm new to all these discussions about wildlife and wildlife corridors, but it seems that there's a lot in this plan that would change about those things, and I would just ask the, the commission to hold off on voting on this until we can become a little more educated on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Maher?
My address is on record. I'm a Durham resident, and I'm co-chair of the New Hope Bird Alliance's Conservation Committee. I want to very much thank the staff for working on trying to fix some of the issues with these reviews, particularly the type that I pointed out earlier this evening where the same thing gets point after point after point. But now I'm going to sort of walk that back a little bit and agree with my colleagues who've spoken about retaining some of these policies that have now been crammed into seventy-nine because they are important, and if we have only one document, one policy holding them, we risk having their importance lessened. And that, that language needs to be very strong, very clear, and we need to be careful that we're not weakening the environmental review. So I am agreeing with the other speakers to say, let's give this a little more time. There have been some significant changes, but not much chance for public review, and I ask that the vote be held off and the, the document submitted to the public in a more transparent fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's all the attendees in the Zoom and in the audience, so we are going to close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner comment and discussion. Commissioner Woke.
Carrie Woke. I have a question. Some folks brought up one ninety-eight and clarification on that. Can, is that, can, can we get a little bit of clarification? Is that lessening?
No, the intent is not to lessen anything. So there is no place type policy right now for the Rural and Agricultural Reserve. The intention for the Rural Agricultural Reserve is for it to be outside the urban growth boundary, and this is simply stating that, and clarifying that. That's the only real intent for including that policy, is to just kind of make clear that Rural Agricultural Reserve should be outside the urban growth boundary unless, as it says in the policy that is before you, unless it's already conserved through a conservation easement or other method, then it could still be in the, you know, if it's, if it's inside the urban growth boundary but has, it's in a voluntary agricultural district, or it has an agricultural easement or something along those lines, it could still stay Rural and Agricultural Reserve.
Okay, so the only Rural and Agricultural Reserve within the UGB has conservation easements on it?
That's the intent of the policy. And that's, we're just stating that here, so it's clarified.
Okay, and so, but, so just to clarify, there is no RAR that isn't already conserved within the UGB?
I think, I can't, I don't have it in front of me. I can't say whether there is or not. My understanding is that everything that's RAR, if it's in the urban growth boundary, it has some sort of easement on it, and all we're doing is stating that and making that public knowledge.
Any other Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Ritchie?
Ramsey Ritchie, it does seem like we needed, or at least it's worth considering taking out whether this should be delayed. I don't know what we need to do procedurally to do that, but I do think...
So I do want to make clear, it is your, it is your prerogative as to whether or not to vote. However, UDO Section three, four, six, E states that it's under Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The Planning Commission shall make its recommendation within three consecutive regular commission cycles, approximately ninety days in total. You saw this at your October meeting, so if you are going to delay, you could not delay past January. We would need to have you take a vote in January. Otherwise, it automatically moves forward with a positive recommendation to the boards. So if you do choose to delay to January, what I would ask is that we get comment, we can, you know, put this out again, we can put out the revised language. I would ask for, to get comments by the end of the month, you know, say in the next three weeks or so, because we have to have our materials to our supervisors for review and all that by end of the first week of December, beginning of the second. So to get those comments, have time to digest them, have time to work with them in order to put materials together to get on your agenda, we need to have that done in four weeks or so. So if we could get those comments within three weeks, have some time to work with them, ask questions, have dialogue, but we do need to bring this to you in January at the latest, otherwise it's going to go forward with a positive recommendation whether you like it or not.
Can I just add on that? I do think that, just as a member of Durham Open Space and Trails as well, we definitely didn't have a good enough notice to provide solid comment on this, and I think that that's probably true for the rest of commissions, and I'm not saying, I think that that's probably just a communication error more than anything else, but given that that is the role of all of these commissions, EAB, B-PAC, and the other ones, I would suggest to the rest of the commissioners that it's worth getting in front of them and giving them time to comment on it. And we should, and we would, I mean, we request that staff would also preemptively communicate that to them, to the extent that that hasn't already happened.
Right, and, and yeah, we've already had, we've had emails with, with DOST Open Space Committee members. We've gotten their input, and, and I just want to say, from a staff point of view, to us, this is clarification, technical, we don't see this really as a change in policy. We've now, myself and our staff, we've been working with these policies now for just about two years, trying to provide those reviews to you, and we saw things over these last two years that we're trying to fix, things that are redundant or unclear, and that's all we were doing, trying to do here was technical changes. But I appreciate that there are those that see them as bigger than that. There's no intent to make any major policy changes through this. Again, it's just really helping us and hopefully the public understand where staff's coming from on our, on our analysis, but we're, we are not opposed to a sixty-day delay to allow for more comment, more thought, but we do need to bring this to you in January.
What happens in January if people are sick and out and we don't make quorum? Just worst-case scenario, if we delay it sixty days and we don't have quorum...
It goes forward with a positive recommendation, so be here.
So be here. At least eight of us.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
Yeah, the question I had is, because it's just really housekeeping is what you're talking about, a little bit of housekeeping.
That's why we, I would say maybe a little more than housekeeping, but...
A little more, so cleaning the baseboards, not just sweeping and stuff like that.
Right.
So when that typically happens, then you don't typically have all the public hearings open for public comment like you would normally do with, when we go through that whole company, like we did back in twenty twenty.
Right, we weren't anticipating yet going to every, doing the whole lot, yeah, again, because we were just cleaning things up, so to speak.
So one of the things I've come to understand, serving on this commission for the new people and the public, according to a good definition, is what we do is we are the keepers of the plan. And this is comments on the plan. So I am going to entertain a motion to delay this for sixty days?
Two, let's say two cycles, because it may not be exactly sixty days.
Put it out, out there to the public more, these, you know, get some feedback, and our feedback also on specific things within...
Yes, please, if you have specific feedback, please send that to me.
And then we can do it again in January. Do I have a motion?
Second. No, I have a motion. Gosh, I'm really struggling. Motion, all right, one second, I gotta pull up the thing. Chair Shigeris, I move, I don't know which one it says. I remove regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendments Evaluation Assessment Report A two five zero zero zero, zero two, that we delay this for two cycles.
Is there a second? It has been moved by Commissioner Ritchie and seconded by Commissioner Juarez Mandonado, sorry, to delay A two five, a quadruple zero, two Evaluation and Assessment Report for two cycles. May we have the electronic voting, please?
The motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. Next item is eight, new business, small area plan information item only. May we have the staff report?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commission, and public. My name is Sarah Long, and I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Development Department, and I'm here to share a brief overview of our small area planning projects. So this presentation is actually based on the Small Area Planning Sculpting Report, which was presented to the Joint City-City Planning Committee, JCCPC, on February fifth of this year. And this is a first step, that was a first step for the planning, small area planning project. projects. So the report proposed a framework and a definition of small area plans and a recommended list of areas to start with. So what, so why are we doing small area plans? The Durham Comprehensive Plan Engagement, during that time, we heard interest from residents and elected officials to undertake special studies looking at specific areas in more detail. Based on these requests and our experience with previous small area plans, such as the Walltown Small Area Plan, we decided that the following unique issues can be addressed by this type of work. And that's increasing resident representation and diversity through equitable engagement through these projects, improving plan effectiveness, and focusing on recommendations on land use issues specifically for these areas, recording infrastructure concerns for these areas, and addressing small area plan compatibility with Durham's larger growth management strategy outlined in the comprehensive plan. So after the scoping report, the next stage is addressing the issues that were presented to the JCCPC and also in your, the Planning Commission memo. And so we outlined our approach to small area plans using definition, the benefits, plan components, location selection criteria, and recommendations. So this information can also be found on the Small Area Plan webpage, which you can see there, and you can also search Durham Small Area Plans, and you can get the same details I may be presenting in this presentation and also that are found in the memo. So simply put, a small area plan is a planning initiative that engages residents in identifying needs, priorities for a specific geography. In that definition, we stress the importance of compatibility with the adopted Durham Comprehensive Plan. This isn't going to replace the Durham Comprehensive Plan, but rather it's an effort to implement it at a smaller level. So just like the comprehensive plan, a small area plan can be used in three main ways: providing guidance for development proposals, informing the community about city and county work, and aiding staff in writing development regulations, such as our new UDO project. So we identified a few benefits with these small, with the small area plans that goes beyond the actual document that we create. And because this work includes an equitable engagement process, we have an opportunity to build connections and relationships with residents. We can work on collaborative mapping with these residents, and also we can collect stories and information from the community. So this is a way of documenting neighborhood characters, making sure we're on the same page about how people see their neighborhood and mapping, and then also making sure that stories and information about a community are also being documented. So what is actually in this planning document? So the plan components will vary based on the unique needs of an area, but in general, this is a list of topics we can focus on. So most of these categories are land use focused, as we want to make sure that we can help solve the problems through zoning or high-level visioning, especially if they're any city or county-owned parcels. So while we will be collaborating with other departments, we still want to focus in terms of what planning does and focusing on zoning and also high-level visioning. The selection criteria, which is outlined in the memo, is a list of criteria that we help to narrow down areas in Durham that might need small area plans. We use the list to select current small area planning projects, as well as some of the upcoming projects that are going to be shown in the next slide. The list is framed as yes or no questions, but can also be answered more thoroughly to develop the purpose and need of the project once we begin the public engagement. So there are several questions regarding land use visioning needs and how that impacts the development and also environmental concerns. So these are all things that be taken into consideration when we're determining whether or not an area can use a small area plan, and then also determining the boundaries of that area. So these are the three current and upcoming small area plans that we're working on this fiscal year 2025, 2026, and we're currently working in two areas, the Lakewood, Weston, and Lion Park area, and the Bragtown region and Oxford-Hamlin area. Our next proposed small area plan is the Hillside and Oak Ridge area, and next we're going to show the boundaries of the projects. So it's important to note that the only project that has started engagement is the Lakewood, West End, and Lion Park Small Area Plan, but not the other two. For this reason, it's only, it's the only project with finalized boundaries. And part of that initial project engagement phase is we talk to community members, we determine what neighborhoods should be included within the boundary, and we want to make sure that's finalized before we actually continue with engagement. So that hasn't started for the Bragtown region and Oxford-Hamlin. Taking a quick look at Lakewood, Weston, and Lion Park, this has begun, the engagement launch was actually on August 26th. The next engagement phase will begin in December, and this, and that particularly engagement will focus on transportation. So if you look at the boundaries, the northern boundary is Chapel Hill Street, and then we have the area around Shops at Lakewood and Purple there. So we're focusing on Shops at Lakewood, and then also Chapahoe Road is the main commercial areas. They're focusing on the residential areas there, south of Maplewood Cemetery, and then moving over to Lion Park area. For the Bragtown region and Oxford-Hamlin Small Area Plan, we're including the Bragtown, Oxford-Hamlin, and Colonial Village neighborhoods, as well as the Oxford Commons Shopping Center. And so again, this is not officially started, the engagement is poised to start at the beginning of next year. And then finally, the Hillside-Oak Ridge, which includes the neighborhoods of Hillside High School, south of Cornwallis Road, and north of Martin Luther King Junior Highway. So the name and the boundaries of this project are subject to change because we have not started even the initial engagements on this project. So that is a very brief overview, and I want to again emphasize that the Lakewood-Weston and Lion Park project engagement is underway. Bragtown is coming shortly, and the Hillside and Oak Ridge project will be next. So thank you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, we're good.
So Erin Kane with the Planning Department, the 2026 meeting schedule is in your packet, that's our recommended one. A couple of things to note. First off, February 24th, 2026, you may note that the intention of that is as a special meeting just for the new UDO. That would ideally be the only thing on the agenda. The second thing is, and this one got me, thank you to Joanne Gordon on our admin staff for noticing this, I checked for holidays, and none of these were on holidays, so I thought we were all good, until she pointed out that September 7th is a Monday which is Labor Day, which means City Council is meeting September 8th, which means we should not meet September 8th. So I'd like to, just like we discussed why we're meeting tonight last year, because November 11th, which is a Tuesday, was Veterans Day, we're going to be in conflict with City Council on September 8th. I would ask what your preference is. We can move our meeting to Wednesday, September 9th, like we did this month for this meeting. We can try to push it back to Tuesday, September 15th. That's getting a no from that end of the dais. I really, we are flexible, we just obviously can't meet on Monday because it's Labor Day. We can, which would be September 15th. Commissioner Woke's not liking that idea.
Commissioner MacIver said he'll be here on September 15th, so I think we're good.
The 9th would be my preference.
I propose September 16th.
Yeah, that whole, yeah, that whole week's bad for me, I have a big event on the 19th. I could do any week, the week of the 7th, I mean, any day.
Can we move up to the first?
So in theory, yes, that would just make it very close, that would only give you a three-week break between the first one, and that is a little tough on staff. Moving to September 15th, because there's five Tuesdays in September next year, that actually spaces things out well for staff. So if we're going to move it, staff would prefer to move it forward rather than back.
Thursday, the 10th.
Any day that week works for us, any day the following week works for us, it's really up to y'all.
Is that a compromise?
Thursday, September 10th.
Yep.
Okay, I will make sure the room is available, and we'll move or have further discussion if need be. So I would just ask them that you approve the 2026 meeting schedule with a change to September, from September 8th to September 10th.
Chair, I move that we approve the 2026 meeting schedule with the noted change of September 10th.
It has been moved by Vice Chair Cameron and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to approve the 2026 meeting schedule with the moving of the September meeting to the 10th.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Committee updates? UDO committee?
UDO committee is meeting with staff, and by staff, I mean Beau and Robin and someone else. Next week, on the 20th, we will have reviewed at that point the extent of the revised UDO, and then that'll be our interactions over it. But our goal is to be ready to have comments by the beginning of February so they can be included in that big meeting. That's the update.
Thank you. Any staff announcements?
No staff announcements.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you.